All right. Okay, do you business, anybody got anything to add?
Yeah, I would like to have a discussion on what's going on with the city on property and waiver avenue.
Okay, you wanna add that?
I don't know if I'll add this number of years, it's our house.
All right, anybody will make a second to add that?
I'll second that.
All right, all of you in need of discussion? All those in favor of adding a discussion of waiver avenue property, say aye?
Aye.
Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to add the travel request from the police department is out of item I.
Okay.
Need a second. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of adding item I, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, anything else? All right, new business will be items A through I. Number one. Seven, eight, resolution two thousand eleven oh five oh one relating declaring weeds on certain property. All right, we will see there. There is one, two, three, four, five property that should be synced up with a picture. Do I have my motion?
So.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of resolution two thousand eleven oh five oh one declaring certain weeds, declaring weeds on certain property, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Okay. Uh, resolution two thousand eleven oh five oh two relating to wheat abatement assessment. This is where we had to actually go out and cut the grass and we assessed the property. And you can see there, um, the cost of the people who cut it for us. And, uh, and where the property was.
Now I'm gonna approve.
Uh, any discussion? All of it, sir?
Yeah, just so. You know, I, I discuss this more than that. What are they doing with these properties? I mean, they just clean all the weeds out of it, most of the grass are rotten.
Most of the grass is wetting.
And on, on a place on Vivian Street is big enough and costs four hundred and fifteen dollars? I've lived here all my life, I don't know if lodges ain't no bigger than this.
They might have this, cleaning on the dishwasher or something.
They don't give you nine miles west what to do?
I thought that was a little high, too.
Little small lodge, I mean.
I think it's a big lot, big giant lot. You know, that if you're going up on business like where, um, um,
Grace.
Past Grace, where there's, uh, the churches and stuff, there's big lots up there. All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Okay. Uh, resolution two thousand eleven oh five oh three relating to gasoline excise tax audit penalty interest waiver request. This is submitted by a, um, a business owner. Y'all don't remember not to say the name. Taxpayer bill, right? Um, the problem, the issue with this is there is a penalty of seventy-one hundred dollars because there was some problems getting the audit done. Normally, audit costs a lot less than this, but that's the penalty and that's also the amount of audit. Also, there is a, um, interest, uh, fifty-two, sixty-seven, thirty-five, which we can't waive by law. And, um, and the item three says that, um, they would ask us to work out an installment plan. We don't want to put people out of business, so the amount of money we're looking at, I think, you know, we ought to strongly consider that. Um, and I guess we should allow the attorneys or finance people, whoever work out a plan with them. Keep in mind, the install plan has to be renewed every twelve months by law. So, if we give them a three or four year installment plan every twelve months, we would have to come back here and re-vote to continue that plan. I'm probably pretty sure that under this amount of money, that, um, they would definitely need an installment plan. Or they probably would have trouble making it.
Can't pay it monthly?
Yeah.
That's installment.
That's the installment.
I know, but I'm saying, can we not just give them a year, twelve months?
No, they can't pay this kind of money. It's not twelve, it's not twelve.
I would, I, I'd like to make a motion, we deny the penalty waiver and the interest waiver.
Right.
On this business.
Actually, Kevin, uh, and David, it doesn't have the total date over on here somewhere. You need to, uh, you need to tell it it's a forty-something thousand dollars. Forty-eight thousand dollars.
Oh, I was just adding that to that. Oh, sorry. All right.
Forty-eight thousand dollars total with the installment and penalty. I mean, not installment, though.
The interest is fifty-two hundred, the penalty is seventy-one.
The forty-eight includes the twelve thousand, whatever it is.
Today's date.
Yeah.
Through February twenty-eleven, it's probably higher.
If we give them two years, we're gonna have interest on top of that and so forth.
Yeah, yes.
Why don't we authorize, you know, the lawyers or some kind of form, standardized form, that we can land these people up? If we do this and they can just sign up to the program. And just, we don't even have to go back to the attorney's office.
They draw it up, boys. One thing that we, they're, they're, they have, um, expressed that they would need an amount that probably would be lower than, uh, you know, this is a, cause, you know, business is, uh, lower to, uh,
Business is tough on gas. Oh, really?
How many buildings, dollars across?
I don't think so.
That's, but that's the individual station owners that aren't making it.
Well, I mean, I can help there, but, um,
I mean, we own some stock or they own some stock, they mix them or something, they don't be doing pretty good, but.
Two cents a gallon.
Yeah, it don't matter what they charge, they're not making a whole lot.
They gotta make all this.
Here, yeah, here's the thing, um, I, it's kind of been expressed to me that in order for them to have a chance to pay it, that they would probably need to pay some percentage upfront before they even worked out an installment plan. And that would probably be, uh, if we're not going to, you know, prove to waive anything, that would probably be the penalty and the interest. So, like, if they paid the penalty and interest upfront, then we, you know, we may be willing to be liberal on installment plan.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
But I still made my motion that we deny the waiver and the tax penalty.
Okay.
Then we approve the lawyers working out this sort of contract.
They don't make this payment, continue to make the payment. Installment.
If they get that much paid, if they front load it that much, they probably can't.
Because it is not the city's fault that they did not pay this tax that was due.
Right, right.
Okay, you got a motion, I'm just second. So, are we giving away with this resolution?
No, we're just denying.
Okay.
We're gonna take them point by point?
No, I just, I didn't say that he has that.
Point one would be denied, point two would be denied.
Point three exempted.
Point three would be exempted, and, uh, and, uh,
That's fine.
Okay, and, and the resolution will be deny penalties and wa, I mean, penalties and interest. And, um, and work out a plan to pay them, pay it.
Penalty and interest first.
First, and then work out, uh, installment plan after that.
Or do you anticipate a twenty-four month?
I'd probably say thirty-six. Looking at what it pays. The only thing, you have to renew it every twelve months.
Okay, I think we've got some misfilled words, not want to go over that.
Okay.
And interest at the very top.
All right, we got a motion and second. All those in favor of doing it that way, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? All right. Oh, this is gonna be exciting. Uh, oh, well, I'm not too the one I'm talking about. All right, business license overpayment revert, uh, reimbursement request, resolution two thousand eleven oh five oh four. Uh, you see the company, uh, made an overpayment because they made a miscalculation. It has been, um, expressed to me by finance and attorneys that, that this seems to be valid. Right? Okay. That they did overpay.
Okay, I'm making a motion that we approve resolution twenty eleven oh five oh four and refund the money.
So.
Discussion. All right, all those in favor, I mean, uh, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Okay, item A, FEMA storm debris cleanup. All right.
This has that resolution.
Frank's transfer engineer, dear mayor Patterson, bid was received on above reference property by City of Leeds on May thirteenth, two thousand eleven, ten a.m. Tasked as to bid tabulate for the project. At the bid opening, Buco Building Contractors showed their bid is one sixteen, two hundred dollars. Once the bids are tabulated, their bid total will one thirty-one, five hundred. The parent low bid is Veterans Landscaping Corporation, an amount of one hundred twenty thousand. I recommend the city award the bid to Veterans Landscaping Company in an amount of one hundred twenty thousand once the city receives concurrents from Michael Johnson with EMA since they submitted the lowest and best bid for the project. If you have any questions, please call. Okay.
Okay, so, let me, they, their bid was one sixteen when they were opened.
But he qualified them, but he qualified them, it's got something to do with, um,
Cause it jumped up, probably the multiplication.
No, no, it has something to do with, um, the hop, the hauling and, uh, and, uh,
Okay, I was just making sure I read that right, but when it was open, their bid was one sixteen.
The item of hauling versus equipment rentals.
Right.
Seem to be an issue with that.
Frank could qualify something.
Okay, so it jumped up about sixteen thousand more dollars.
Right.
And if his question behind what he needed done.
And here's the thing about, I'm gonna explain this because, you know, we came in here and we're all gon', all excited about, we got, um, a couple of weeks worth of work, bid at twenty-six thousand something dollars to get, um, big freeze up, we had three or four crews working on it, and that was just a great price. Well, I went to Besford to a meeting, I went, uh, to a couple more meetings where they kept saying, you gotta call these debris removal people and they'll tell you exactly how FEMA wants everything done. Well, you call and the, the voicemails were full, nobody ever called you back, so we just took a chance and bid it. Well, the FEMA man finally called me back and says, y'all bid it all wrong, we can't do a, a unit contract price like that. So, they said, but we have a sample, uh, contract that you need to follow. And the sample contract looks like war and peace, it's so long, and, um, you have to pay people independently to monitor what they're picking up. You have to have somebody stand up there and write down everything, the thing they come in the yard with. I mean, it is a lot to it. Uh, but Frank did add picking up refrigerators, freezers, destroyed property, things like that that you normally can't pick up. And, uh, it's pretty much got household furniture destroyed in the storm, things that you can, but we can verify that were destroyed. And, uh, he's added everything on, uh, he went by form contract that FEMA and the, uh, Alabama, uh, debris removal people sent to us. And, uh, Michael Johnson will send him, will send him the contract we had bid, and I do not think he sent back that, um, he's approved it. Feel very strongly he's gonna approve it since they sent us the contract. However, it is a lot more money, and, uh, the city could be on the hook for, uh, it's either ten or twenty percent of it.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, eighteen thousand dollars. And, uh, the first seventy hours is supposed to be covered by FEMA when we had the emergency situation. So, that should be covered, but, uh, we met all the requirements, um, under this new contract. And, um, it's really, there's really a lot to it. I mean, at one time, they said if the people didn't have a tower to look down in the back, the top of the truck, they had to build a tower to see what the trucks were bringing in. They couldn't work for the company, they couldn't work for the city, and have some money to sit up there and, and, um, take note of what was brought in, you had to do it by either cubic yards, you had to do it by tonnes. Well, of course, that drove the price of the contract way up. But Frank's recommending, um,
Plus, the person who won the other contract didn't even bid this one. My, my question is that, well, I guess you need, I have, I have discussion, but I guess you need a motion, which I'm not making.
Do we have a motion to accept Veterans Landscaping? And, and all this has cost us probably a week of, uh, independent, uh, contract labor to help us. You know, so we're behind on these huge crews, and we just don't have the ability to get those.
Um, I'll make the motion as, uh, with the caveat that it's approved by FEMA.
Okay. Discussion.
In my opinion, the first bid that we let covered all the things that we needed done, was twenty-six thousand dollars. And that was with us taking, uh, you know, control of the situation, knowing exactly, you know, what needed to be done. And, um, Proha was gonna take care of that. In this one, you're, you know, turning, you are turning it over, even though it's the city bidding the contract, you're turning it over to FEMA to run. And it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, of which we will pay at least eighteen thousand. Um, and it's very, I mean, it is, I've read the contract and it, I mean, it is very, very intense for somebody to even have to bid that contract. I'm not sure from a financial standpoint and for the speed to recover the city, that it wouldn't be better to just go with that first bid that we bid and not ask for FEMA.
Just pay it all, just ask ourselves.
It depends on how much time it took to get turned around on the money. You know, I mean, um,
I thought you said earlier that if this is debris and,
It is, and the other contract, not for that.
Well, but we're not, we're not an area of a city that has as mu, that, that's why FEMA has that contract like that. Where, our city was not destroyed in, in the manner that they're bidding this out to people like Pratt City and Concord and McDonald Chapel, where all that stuff has got to go. You know, I just, I'm s-
I understand your point, I thought about that, too.
I mean, people could just start getting rid of things they wanted to get rid of at the city's dollar, because they can.
My issue is I, I hate to turn the control over to the, it's FEMA, and we're at their mercy and their schedule, their, you know.
Well, if you look at one thing, uh,
What about liability?
And disposal of eligible construction, construction debris at City of Leeds landfill, but that's a staging area, we can't keep stuff out there. And that's the grinding and hauling of stuff, too, I think, wherever they can take the stuff, too. Um, a lot of stuff, I mean, on the old city hall site, where we were staging there, we had a pile of wood chips over eighteen, two hundred.
I know, but, but George, do you think that there's that much more to do again?
There's still a few weeks left. Yeah, I do.
Sorry?
There's probably a month left to follow. I do. There's lots, there's still a lot.
There's still power poles down at the top of the crest in Calvi.
One thing about it, the only good thing I can say about it all is if we get this approved, we may can get it approved to, uh, go on, you know, eventually to, uh, allow us to go on to some private property, you know, properties that, uh, the people are, uh,
Well, I mean, if that's true, then that's a different animal, but how, how do you know that's?
We don't know.
There's a, there's a thing in FEMA national right now about that.
Yeah.
That we're gonna decide whatever, uh,
I mean, we've gotten, I know we got, we got an email actually today or yesterday.
Yeah, if, if we end up doing all this stuff and we do it wrong, someone down the line, we just gonna file back on us, we're gonna have to redo it again. It's, this company that they're in is gonna be responsible for all the FEMA, uh, rules, regulations, so if they file back on us, we're asked eighteen thousand dollars.
Should be, should be, that's what I'm being told. And if this Michael Johnson approves it, he works for the governor's office. And the governor, if it gets approved within thirty days of the storm, the state will pick up, I mean, the ten or ten percent, or?
I think it's ten, I asked about that email.
Of their own, so they'll cut, they'll take ten percent of our twenty-five.
Well, I don't think we need, you know, if we're gonna pay twenty-six to something, I'd rather pay eighteen and hope to put it on somebody else's shoulder, whether it does take another couple of weeks or whatever.
I think that we try to work with them, that we can hopefully get reimbursed. And it'll make it easier for us to do other things that, you know, I was told that FEMA would go on people's, um, private property if they could get a, um, easement release for the, for temporary, and if the city would give them a release temporary. But we don't know how that works yet.
I would think most homeowners would give them a lease, they're gonna get trees.
Is that a lot, they want to be related?
No, no, that's just the ability to walk onto the property.
Well, I think we just need to be very, you know, tough with veterans, that they have to abide by the rules and can't go outside there, because they have to learn to step outside the, the, yeah, the contract language.
It's just a shame because of the regulations and the price.
Oh, I know.
And it's not their fault, I'm sure they're making all the regulations, too. So, all right, we got a motion or not?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Any other discussion?
Except, well, um, the one twenty, with the caveat that it's approved by FEMA.
Well, that's the only thing, um, and I haven't, Frank's been handling this, but he has sent me some emails, and one email says, you know, that's why he asked me to look at the CFR and give him some information about that, but he wrote FEMA cannot approve a contract either. So, I, I don't know that you're gonna get some approval from FEMA, that's exact, that's what Frank was saying.
But the guy from the state emergency management, Michael Johnson, who's handling that, can approve.
It is the EMA then.
Is he approving it, or is he just saying it meets FEMA guidelines?
He's gonna say it meets FEMA guidelines and everything.
Now, he, he's, oh, probably, he said, um, he said, I cannot approve a contract only by the technical comments and eligibility. I'm just saying, for the purpose of your motion, that is, and he's saying he will not approve it. He's given Frank a lot of information to make sure we technically, frankly, we technically met all the requirements.
He told me on the phone personally, okay, that if we send him the contract back, he was send, he was sending us back in two days.
Okay.
That, uh, it met all their requirements.
But he's just saying it meets, he's not approving it, we have to.
Yeah, he's just saying that it fulfills all the requirements.
Fulfills all the require, and he also informed me on the phone that there was a couple of cities who had bid out these projects, that probably won't be approved.
And then you tell FEMA that again?
Yeah, they did.
Well, okay, you'll be changing my motion to say that, um, uh, Michael Johnson with the state EMA, not, so, okay, if the, if the state EMAs, I'll miss, um, not approves, but feels that this contract fulfills all the requirements of the FEMA guidelines, then we should award the bid to veterans.
All right, that's a motion.
Yeah, Ross, will you read second?
Yes.
Okay.
And the others, good?
We read it again.
I'll repeat it to you. If this contract, uh, uh, makes, um, the requirements of the debris removal specialist from the EMA according to FEMA guidelines, that we will approve it based on that.
So, we gonna, what's gonna happen, we gonna put this hundred and some thousand dollars of ours in, and FEMA's gonna reimburse us.
Reimburse us for, um, seventy-five percent of the state, we'll reimburse it for ten, if we get it done within thirty days of the four days.
And we're not gonna get it.
That's not gonna happen.
That's not getting the job, it's just getting approval.
It's already been, we're into our third week, three weeks wins.
It's just getting the approval, it's not getting the job cleaned out.
I'll finish all the work.
I just changed the resolution, and I think you can just add in paragraph two, it can say Veterans Landscaping is awarded the bid for the contract for storm damage removal. If this contract needs the approval of the state of Alabama EMA, that such con, that such contract needs being done.
I don't know why it wasn't the city contract, did it?
Um, I'm just, his messages were a little bit odd from the beginning.
Cause we got it straight from him. But I am concerned. I don't know.
You know, certainly agree on this, oh, go ahead, Jack.
Recognize.
The better landscape. Okay, I think they need, if they sign this contract, and they need this verbiage in there that they know to go line by line out of this contract, not pull a wordplay on it that they, they want to take, they want to do.
Yeah, I know where we're at.
You know what I'm saying?
I got.
And that way, they're gonna, if they do not follow the contract, then they gonna be liable.
Yeah, and I think Frank probably writes in the contract or something written in the contract, like to be removed or, uh, follow the policy of the guidelines. Um, the one that gets me is they have to have a monitor, we have to pay an independent monitor to monitor what they're bidding with. That can't be.
Well, you have to hire.
Yes, and they can be, you can't bring them to city.
That would be fine. I'd give it all up.
Hey, if you don't have a way to look in the back of the truck, you have to do a tower.
Mayor, I think that, uh, we're gonna spend all this money, we're gonna get shot.
I hope not.
But I, my office looks like it's, it's earnest. I think what we really should do is just let our workers just get it up, most of it, as much as they can, and hire this other crew enough for twenty-six thousand and be through with it. Because I believe we're gonna get stuck with a hundred thousand, huh?
Oh, it's gonna be probably a year before you get some money.
Uh-huh.
And it's gonna be sometime.
The only problem with the twenty-six thousand dollars, it had a finite number of hours and time and work. And it also didn't allow for like, uh, if you, something like, say it's your house, it fell through your house and crushed your TV and refrigerator, we can't pick that kind of stuff up by law.
Yeah.
The city can't pick that up.
And I'm,
Environmental.
And that's what I'm saying, I don't think we have that kind of improvement that we have to worry about. But you know, what I'm trying to say is, you know, when I talk about everybody, when the lights come on, we get a little relaxed, that's what's gonna happen to FEMA. All this disaster's over, they're gonna get relaxed and we're gonna get stuck with a hundred thousand, huh?
Let's hope not, one thing that we can look at.
I did go ahead on and say it.
Well.
We're gonna be stuck.
Uh, one thing we look, you gotta look at is, I don't know that they are guaranteed this amount of money. That's just what they bid on the estimate of the scope of work. So, so if, uh, they don't do this amount of work, the part of the, So, so if, uh, they don't do this amount of work, the part of the monitors that they're paid according to that, isn't that, isn't that right, Kevin? Emily, you know what they said?
I do not know, I think Frank would know.
I think that's true.
I was asking to look at.
He just made an estimate on what he thought is paid twenty-nine. If they don't get to that level, then we don't have to pay the total amount.
What could go wrong?
No.
It's a go, it goes with the on the list.
All right.
Kevin's saying, then he know what I'm talking.
And we have a discussion, he and half of the other base.
A little bit.
Mr. Kyle has concerns and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, you know, we're all depending on the federal government to come through for us, that's all I'm saying.
And that's why we all have this.
So.
Mayor, does Karen want to take out those changes?
Uh, Becky's, okay, she's coffee.
So, uh, let's vote on whether we want to accept veterans with the stipulations, that's what the motion is second.
Yeah. Just want to get this.
Uh, all right, one thing we gotta do is get going on something, we're a week behind. We were knocking it out, man, and then we just haven't stopped. I slowed down, cause Jordan and them had extra help and then they're just having to do it all themselves. I know mowing, digging graves, uh, weed eating, uh, it's, I mean, they're just watering flowers, it's stretching.
So this, so when this transpires, it's gonna release our city employees and maintain regular stuff that normal maintenance.
It'll raise them some, but I think they'll still pick up the small stuff. I think they probably would want to.
Just your normal stuff.
Normal route. I think they would still do some of that.
Usually what, what they would do anyways.
Yeah.
Is there, is there an estimated timeline that they're gonna do this?
No.
Should be written in the contract, right?
Well, I just wanna know what y'all have, y'all vote for it, I wanna vote for it.
I'm gonna vote for it.
But I, Kyle's.
I think the best chance we got to get any future other help would be if we have some feeling from FEMA. I mean, that's all I'm saying, we're rolling the dice, that's all I'm saying.
Well, we have even FEMA before, when we had the floods and stuff, we used FEMA. And FEMA was hard to get the money out of.
Anybody out there calling FEMA right again, anybody? They called you back?
Yeah, they did not.
What?
So, you know, and here on the city council, I've been here a long time, we use FEMA several times. It's hard to get the money out of, even when we do the right thing, it's still hard to get that money. So I'm saying is we can set up here and decide to spend a hundred thousand dollars, we gamble, whether we're gonna get it back.
I'll say one, one more thing, if it's under sixty-eight thousand dollars, I think you probably won't be off.
Oh, yeah, and you're gonna get offed.
So if it's over sixty-eight thousand dollars, because they have to do it in increments of, uh, quarters, and you probably will be offed. So that will slow down the process, let's just take a vote, all right, start.
So, what, what's our other option, is to just do the twenty-six thousand and cut out the freon and all the other white goods? Take the amount of bid and go back to that original twenty-six thousand dollar bid?
But then if we do that, people who have those kind of problems will be on their own. Crush TV, crush the refrigerator, they're on their own.
You know, it is tax money, it is everybody to do it for, what about the other rap?
I think.
I mean, what are they costing us, only twenty-six thousand, hundred fifty thousand, that's what we're here to do, appropriate money, clean their city back up.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's our option, is to spend the one twenty or to spend the twenty-six?
I don't think twenty-six thousand, I wouldn't start playing this place up for twenty-six thousand, obviously, yeah, anybody can.
No, it won't, it won't get it done off.
Well, good.
It'll knock the dent in it for us, our crew, all right, let's vote.
We don't have a bar, but.
Mister, uh, y'all wanna take it by road call or just call together?
All right.
All right, everybody, those in favor of accepting the FEMA bid or FEMA required contract bid, uh, with the stipulations that have been put on it, say aye.
Uh.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Okay.
I asked you when you were gonna vote.
I told you I was gonna vote. I'm just concerned about what, getting shut out.
You wanna change your vote?
No, if there's a chance we're gonna take, I hope we get our money back.
Uh, storm damage, us update, one that we did that. Adam, uh.
Well, I, I need to add Adam J., we forgot, um, I forgot something and, um, it should've been on here. Um, we need to, uh, set a hearing date for, um, the zoning on highway twenty-five. Uh, it passed the zoning board Thursday night and it will be sent to us and we need to set a hearing date for that.
Can we do that without that letter though?
Well, they're supposed to have the letter to the city.
I don't have it yet.
Do you have it, Kevin?
No.
Okay, never mind then, that's just four more weeks.
No, I'm not necessarily.
Did you not say they give the letter to the city?
Well, he just said he'd get it to me and say when.
All right, okay, apparently last week, when I was out, uh, I was, I was the governor. Uh, there was some discussion of the football bathrooms. If y'all have, uh, played football or been up to the football field, uh, the bathrooms are like a, uh, deeper waste, uh, area or something, you'd be afraid to go in them. And, uh, there's only one for football, one for the men and one for the women, can you even, y'all played up there, ain't you?
Yeah.
How, they got pretty good crowds, don't they?
Yeah.
Yep.
Hundreds of people.
Yeah.
Lot of people.
Okay, we have been in contact, uh, Frank and I, I don't know about Ross or Mr. Kyle or Mr. Kyle or anybody, but we've been in contact with a couple of different people, last year when we talked about this, the bids came in, uh, extremely high, we've relooked at it, and, um, I believe that if we could, uh, look at, especially when we got some different builders on, around town, things like that right now, um, we could look at, uh, setting a, uh, limit and, uh, of, um, sixty thousand dollars. Think that's gonna be high, uh, uh, I think, but I don't think anything exceeds that. And trying to, uh, get Frank to relent bids on these, um, bathrooms. We've got people coming in from all over to, uh, the football fields, I think they have, uh, maybe bigger crowds than baseball, I don't know. Pretty big crew, crew up there. And, um, if we can look at, um, maybe approving, um, to try to draw up something without limit. And then try and get something done before the fall. We know that, um, a lot of excitement around coming to, um, the parks, people coming from Birmingham, they're coming from all over to use our parks. They're coming out here and they're talking about how things, how good the parks are doing, I mean, older people, younger people, everybody excited about it. And, um, it's just bad to have bath, two bathrooms like that, I mean, uh, I can tell you now that I think most of the kids are probably going in the woods.
Well, not the girls.
I mean, not the girls, the boys.
And not the, and not the heavy cam.
That's right.
Yeah.
Didn't we get a bid on that one?
Yeah, we gotta be, it's way too high, but.
Sixty-five, what'd you say?
Uh.
Even what, the first one was higher than that.
The first one was, uh, six, the lowest one we could ever get was sixty-five. And then we had a, a plumber in town agree to do some work for free, they dropped it down under six. That was pretty, uh, nice of that person. And now we've got, um, Frank, I think, has relooked at it, tried to, uh, you know, I think he's talked with me about some things that might could be done to make it just as nice, but, uh, save some money. And, uh, it, um, it would be a pretty big bathroom, it would have actually four or five stalls for women, two for men, three urinals, so that's a pretty good ba, size bathroom for, uh.
Well, and you really need them, cause a lot of the children change clothes in there too, so that's why you need a little bit of more space than just a, a.
Yeah, I bet same for the wall, but probably, I think he's got drawn just the hair to do.
Not bigger, but the same quality.
Foot things, quality fixtures and everything, uh, and he's trying to build something that'll last, uh, cause you know, people hard on that kind of stuff. And, you know, stomping on the back of toilets and stuff like that.
We're not gonna have plywood or hedges on.
No, we're gonna try not to, yeah, and, uh, uh, so, uh, if y'all want to at least pass a resolution, not a resolution, pass it, uh, make a motion to take bids up to that and let him, or to let him draw up something.
The construction budget is sixty thousand dollars.
And that really set a limit of that. Uh, so we don't get it.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we ask Frank to, um, and I, I would say let bid, you know, let bids with appropriate drawing, um, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
A construction budget not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Well, I don't know, I might want the whole thing to include that, verteid him from drawing.
Yes.
This guy, you with the youth, right? Do y'all not, is that where y'all do y'all's weigh-ins?
Uh, no, we use, uh, we use a church down in Moody to do weigh-ins.
Church in Moody, when you play up here?
Well, it's not just limbs.
No.
No, no.
It's the whole league.
I can tell you that, uh, I can tell you, we only do weigh-ins at the beginning of the season, we don't do it every week like, like they used to.
Okay.
But, uh, I will tell you that, uh, this facility up here is, it definitely needs help.
It probably still got the wa, same water, toilet, my kids play up there.
I can tell you that, that all, well, all the, the, the toilets and everything is all residential, none of it's commercial brand. I mean, I, I can't begin to tell you how many times I've, I've probably told it on a Saturday.
There's, there's two two-by-fours holding up.
No handicaps.
If I could, the storm would not got there.
And I can also tell you that, uh, you know, on, on, on any given Saturday, we will have like a thousand people up there, I don't know. If you look, if you look at, we're, we're a, a, a good sized park, we have a hundred kids, and if you look at, if each kid having two parents, which
Well, that's, you've got, you've got a hundred football kids and you've got a hundred cheerleaders.
Exactly.
Is that, is it gonna be tied on with the existing assassin stand or is it gonna be freestanding?
It's gonna be freestanding, it's freestanding. It'll be freestanded and it'll be designed in a way that the parents are sitting in the bleachers, hopefully they'll be able to watch the doors.
Ken.
Yes, yeah.
You know, apparently this field is gonna be used for being, uh, go up there and play football or anything, built out on the far end. And I think we need to build something that's, that's gonna be nice, whether it's sixty-five or seventy-five thousand, we need to go ahead and improve it while, while we can.
Well, guys, I can also tell you that, you know, the league is also added in Trusville, Clay Chalkville, uh, Fulton Dell, Gardendale, Morris. So we go all over Birmingham, and people from all of Birmingham come to Leeds.
There's kids, right now, there's football, there's a big sport in Leeds, uh, they got some good coaches at the high school, there's developing good young men, and I'm talking about real good young men, both black and white. They walk up to you, stick your hand out, say yes, sir, you know, that, you can't put money value on that. And they're getting educations, they're coming out of here two and three a year getting educations. And, and I'm sitting in a place last year and had a L on my hat, a guy comes in there, he said, you from Leeds? I said, yeah, I'm in Mississippi, and the guy says, Leeds out of bounds, three A state champions. I said, how'd you know that? He said, well, I know some people in Birmingham. We're getting more exposure and we're gonna have more people coming here, and like old Gary played in baseball, cause we don't need to go chinchy, we need to do something nice.
I agree. Well, you know, it's a reflection of the city, people come out here and they see, um, something like that and they go, man, you know, I just don't, you know, they, they stuff about, like the bathrooms and things like that, and they just, uh, you know, I don't wanna go to Leeds cause gotta wait out there thirty minutes, go to the bathroom and stuff and, and all, and, and, and. It really, it really has a direct reflection on how people come to your park, who come, who shows up, how people feel about you, uh, stuff like that. I mean, uh, we want people to come to Leeds and have a good experience with whatever they do, when they go home and will say, man, you know, those people in Leeds got it going on, this is really nice. And you oughta go out there and visit or whatever, and I think that, um, I, the money we'd be paying back on something like this, even though it sounds trivial, is tenfold, I think so.
And I'll also say that, uh, you know, we're working on moving the scoreboard now that you've got the new baseball park going in. We're gonna try and put in permanent goalposts, we're gonna do a lot of improvements on the field this year.
Right.
You know, hopefully, that field up there is gonna let turf, you know, look very nice.
They getting, Frank, they're, they're getting Frank's.
Yes, we are.
Aren't, aren't they still gonna use that up for field softball playing?
For practice.
Yeah, for practice, yes. Baseball field's being moved, we're gonna use those infields and the outfields on the far ends to practice on, to keep a lot of the traffic off the field. And we've got irrigation system coming in, and, uh, you know, like I said, we're doing a lot of work up there ourselves, but we appreciate everything the city does for us also.
Yeah, you know, last year they got benches and they got.
We have most.
Before that, they had, uh, they had wood, wooden benches. All right, all those in favor of, 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 of talking to Frank about resetting, um, uh, the plans that he had before with changes, allow for a bid and not exceed sixty thousand dollars this time, say aye.
Uh.
Aye, all opposed, say no. All right. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we grant, um.
Uh, Johnny's is first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I've been hearing something about patterns of demolition of the house that we had, that owned by the city. They didn't demo it, they turned around and put it on wheels and soap. And I'm just, I'm curious, I don't know what's going on, and people calling me, I have no idea.
Well, definitely, uh, all right, well, first, what, first place, let's see what happened is, uh, you know, we don't vote to condemn property we own, we vote to, uh, you know, and we only declare it surplus if we wanna sell it and it has real value. And, uh, in this case, it had a real value, pretty good bid, but that was not foreseeable under the conditions that we looked at. That we looked at, uh, you know, um, they did some things that, uh, we can't, you know, we don't know what our cost would've been to do the same thing, that had an advantage over us, um, it's a house on Weaver Avenue that the city owned that we bought from, uh, Lowe's, as part of the Lowe's deal. I don't know, how long it's sat vacant, how long has it sat vacant, three and a half, four years, four years, whenever, been longer than that? You did, I don't even. That's almost five years, four years, yeah, four years. All right, so it's already vacant, it's for four years, got a hole in the roof and was leaking for a while, we didn't know about it, cause we, I guess we didn't do our due diligence, go out there and look at it all the time. Heating and the air was stolen off of it, uh, it's, uh, broken into at least twice, front door kicked in a couple of times. Uh, it's come, we think it was a place for vagrants and transits, I don't know about drug people, but we decent at vagrants. Highway stayed there, um, and how it's sitting in there is a little bit tiny, one lane road behind two houses. And it had a fence between the property and that door all the way to the road. And, you know, we didn't know how to get it out of there, uh, I mean, uh, it, it couldn't be hauled through that little road and, and you gotta get the property owner next door to allow you to easily drag it over to there, we don't have any way to move property. We don't have any way to, uh, the city done have any way to haul it out, and, uh, you know, it, it was been put up that it'd be rented, but it was suggested to me that the city doesn't wanna get into rental business cause of live buildings. Set, and. And by that, um, if you set prices for people and, you know, for somehow somebody on the council or the city was keen to, or any of those people, and somebody came back and said, that's not a fair price, you know, you're getting it, you're just, you know, you're getting advantage. I mean, not, you know, inadvertently, that's a problem for us. If you three or four people come and you get, and you, you pick somebody, you got two, you got two or three people say one, and you pick meat over in it, that could be a fair housing or some kind of problem with that, so we, we didn't really think we wanted to be in the rental business. And to be in the rental business, we could, it estimated it would be twenty to thirty thousand dollars to fix that house up to rent. Once we rented it, tied up the property for a long time, up, probably up to a year, to, that we couldn't sell it for commercial profit. And if we fixed it up to sale, we would've had to sell it for what it valued at as residential, 'cause somebody would've wanted to buy it with a house on it to live in it. So that kinda was a problem, and, um, it had been talked about a few times to be put on, uh, the list to move it because we'd I'd been approached by a couple of, uh, businesses to try to link the property up there to form a commercial site. And I don't, that may not, that probably not gonna pan out now, but it could. But it wasn't worth as much for the house sitting on it as it was worth for the house sitting, not sitting on it. However, when we hired the people to demo the house, rather than demo in the house like they're supposed to, they had a little, they had a salvage value, uh, clause in their demo thing. They apparently, and I don't know the exact way it was done, got a deal with a person next door to it, they took down the fence, drug it over onto their lot, and sold it for twenty-six, for twenty-six or twenty-eight, what did you owe?
I owe twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars. Well, we think they, and we're gonna look into it, we think they probably owe us for what it cost to, uh, what they were supposed to spend to demo it. So any salvage value, they're supposed to put that in their, take that in consideration in the contract. They didn't demo it, you know, like I said, we didn't know we could get it out of there. And, uh, you know, and, yeah, they got a pretty good bit of money off of it. And, uh, and we could've surplus it, but the problem we, we'd had to surplus it, if we were gonna sell it, was to figure out, um, you know, how to move it, how to get it out there to put it up for sale, how to appraise it, uh, how to get into agreement with the next door landowner, get the fence down, things like that. And that's things that weren't perceived, it's probably a mistake on, really not on y'all's part, it's probably a mistake on my part. Okay? But it was done, and, uh, you know, it was, it was.
Well, it was on our demolition list.
It was on our demolition list, and, and, and I, these are things that we just couldn't perceive.
To me, salvaged doesn't mean hauling the whole house off.
Uh.
I mean, that's like when they tore the armor down and they took the ribs, all the brick, that's salvaged.
But you know.
You know, this council voted on somebody renting the house for seven hundred fifty dollars worth of bucks. Now, after we went in office, I think we fixed the air conditioner and they put a new air conditioner in it.
We did vote, we did talk about it. We did vote to talk about it.
No, we voted, there was a seven hundred fifty dollar contract that somebody knew that you had lined up to rent it.
But they never took it.
And, well, you know, we approved stuff, we'd never hear the backside of what's going on. And I heard this the other day, that they moved the house out, and you know, I, and that brought up veterans about, then you better group your contract over real good with these guys.
Yeah, I agree.
And make sure they do exactly what, because apparently, you know, they don't do what they think they're gonna do. Uh, that house was real valuable last administration. And, and, uh, like two thousand, what was it, about two thousand and four, starting two thousand and four, it was renovated. Yeah. Go back on your record, and you know, so I, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm confused at, uh, how they can get away with this, they made twenty-eight thousand, we sat here, foot on our tongue.
Well, you know, like I said, we don't really know how that would've worked out for us, 'cause we gotta move, gotta pay to move it. We don't have that kind of equipment. You gotta work out something with the people next door to take the fence down, put the fence up. You got, um, you know, we, you know, we didn't know, you know, if it could be gotten out of there, it's a liability to have a house over there that's not, um, um, that vagrants and people can be in and blighted and, uh, and all, and, um, people stealing stuff off of it now, and just getting into rental business doesn't seem to be the rule. Can be something that the city will, will wanna do, I have to get to looking into it, and, you know, uh, I mean.
Did we pass a back out of written it, that we had written that contract for?
Yes, uh, you know, uh, you know, um, one thing that makes, that, that probably jacked the price up of this house is, uh, that when we when, when we bid it, there's a lot of excess property on the ground, and a house like this wasn't really, you know, moving a house was not something probably people wanted to do, because a tornado and all came along and people are looking for housing. A cheap house like this, somebody could fix up, but, you know, for us to put twenty-five thousand dollars in it would be a lot, especially if we, you know, had to, um, you know, I mean.
I mean, I don't, I understand what you're saying on that point. We don't need to be tying investments up on commercial property that's got a house on it.
Right.
But also, it was a demolition.
Right.
He's supposed to strip what he can out of that house, not take the whole house.
Right.
So he violated the, uh, contract by that, if he didn't demo it.
Yeah, there's a clause in it that says we're supposed to get a credit for anything like that. And you can, I don't know, interpretation of it. I think it was a, uh, you know, it's, uh, I mean, I agree we need to, it, it, it's a miscapulation on, uh, our part, let somebody do that. But we don't really know what it would've cost us to do the same thing.
Well, and, and that's reason, I, I, I kinda want to discuss this before we had a bid, because I don't want them
To do the same thing.
Do the same thing to us on this bid, we get stuck out here with, uh,
Some kind of deal like that.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, if not anybody.
You're saying that FEMA's gonna send you everything you need to do to get that money back. That don't mean they're gonna do it. 'Cause we're gonna pay them, they're gonna be gone, and when FEMA comes in, they say, no, we already done this right, you know? So we're gonna have to make sure that they got some kind of, we got some alternative to fall back on them if they don't do it like we say.
I agree with you.
I did bet.
Absolutely. I think it's, uh, you know, and, uh, we all, we did vote on it and everything, but I think it did, and I know that, um, you know, most people, uh, up here, you know, look to, uh, the people who are on the day-to-day with this stuff, to give them the correct guidance. That wasn't, uh, no, I mean, we, I had no way to perceive they were gonna do something like that.
And I, and I can understand that, I mean, that's a, that's a typical thing, but then, then I get back to the same thing. We're doing contract business with them again, and we need to definitely make sure that we're gonna have the upper hand on this.
You know, I, um, you know, it's sa, it's kinda the same kinda deal that was done before on the boy scout house and tub auto and all that stuff. Kinda something you couldn't really use and couldn't really do a whole lot with, that you didn't think, we didn't think we could. But, you know, they did, so it looks kinda like, I, I agree.